Thank you all, I think we've got everyone here. Okay. All right, well, we'll get started with the... Everybody ready, the Karakia? And you guys will have to help me on this. Thank you, everyone, I declare the meeting open and welcome to today's meeting of Finance, Audit and Risk Subcommittee. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and if, could you let me or our democracy advisor know if you will be leaving this meeting during it? We will be adjourning at 10:30 for a 15-minute break. Are there any apologies? That's good, I think we've got everybody here. Oh, okay, so we've got, okay, we have one apology from Mayor Foster for lateness, so I'll move that motion. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Rush, I now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Those in favour, please press 1, to the contrary, press 2. Okay, that motion is carried. Are there any conflict of interest declarations? Okay, there's nothing there. And I'd like to move the confirmation of minutes that the Subcommittee approves the minutes of the Finance Audit and Risk Subcommittee meeting held on 12th of November 2020 having been circulated and that they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a seconda, please? Oh, thank you, councillor Paul. So those in favour, please press 1 or 2 to the contrary. Okay, I declare the motion carried. There are no items on the agenda and there are no requests for public participation. So the first item on our agenda is the Assurance and Integrity Report. Before I introduce the report, can I please welcome fellas Lee to the table and to answer any questions? And we also have Richard Levington here as well as manager finance audit and risk, oh sorry, audit and risk, sorry. Does anybody have any questions of our officers? Oh councillor Conde?
Thanks, just a couple of questions, I want to start with, in the report you talked about the continuous auditing activity and the completeness of gift register declarations? And I'm just aware that that came up, the gift register came up in a prior meeting of FARZ about whether councillors were appropriately used in the gift register and whether that was something that you'd looked into as part of that auditing activity.
Yeah, thank you councillor Conde, so we did not look at councillors' risk gifts register for this review, so we were looking at officers and particularly those who make decisions, like regulatory decisions. But definitely there's something that we can expand on in the future because, yeah, if that is what is requested.
I certainly think that would be useful and given that it came up in a previous meeting, I think it's worth us pursuing. Another question I had was just about the number of open findings that you've got here and I saw that there was one from a report in September 2018 that is high and I was just wondering what that was and why it's still outstanding given if it's high priority.
Yeah, so that is relating to integration within our building go-get system which is our building consent system. So the reason why it's high was because it was creating a significant lot of inefficiencies which also impacts on timeframes and we know how much pressure there is around, you know, meeting those timeframes. So when there's a system change, it's not something that we expect councillors to be able to do like really quickly in six months, it's something that require a lot more, I guess, thought and planning. From what I understand, the go-get system will be upgraded around March or so, later than March, so that was the plan and I think integration is also underway. So I'll catch up with the building consent team is that we are satisfied that they are progressing on it, it's just not something that is a quick fix.
And finally, I was just interested in the independent review, there was a couple of independent assessments you'd done on complaints received from the public and I was particularly interested in the one around the parking services team just because I'm the portfolio leader in parking services, wondering if you could tell us anything more about that?
So this is a complaint by a public about how his complaint was initially treated within the organisation. So apparently he made some requests around looking at parking policy decisions, like whether the parking should be P30 etc and all that. And he felt that he wasn't being listened to and he made a complaint about how that process worked. Unfortunately, that complaint didn't get escalated up soon enough and so part of our query was looking at what happened and why we didn't be addressed the complaint more efficiently etc. And our finding was, yes, there was some miscommunication but there was no, there was no intention to like to shut down or to hide, there was purely just a communication around what was done and communicating in particular back to the customer around the decisions that they were made.
Were there some process improvement suggestions that came out of that?
Yep, there were some process improvements and these have been committed back to the chief operations officer under Claire's area. So this review was in some ways requested by Claire to just have that independent view. So it's a good outcome, I think, in terms of some learnings and lessons learned.
Are there any other questions, Mr Tiffin?
My view of this report is that your audits are covering a relatively small part of the whole organisation and perhaps the hanging, low-hanging fruit to pick off. I would have expected more, have you got enough resources or do you need more? I probably ask this question every time.
Good question to ask, Roy. We are developing our plan for next year and through that we're looking at lifting some of the audits that tend to be transactional and focus on known issues to provide assurance over the higher level, the chief exec's KPIs and using risk resource, so risk-based auditing.
Good.
And still providing the Subcommittee with assurance over core controls which are the fundamentals that still need to be working. We do have enough resources at the moment, we'll be looking for maternity cover for one of the team members who's heading off in May, but confident at this stage that we have the resources and to support that fact, delivery of the audit plan for this year is on track if not ahead of schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, right, well I'll, councillor Rush?
So is this, it's described in recommendation two, note progress of internal audit plan, so is that the name of the plan or is that the name of the group?
Our team was gifted this name about three years ago, so it was the name of the function and so it's the internal audit plan.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. No other questions? I will introduce the report now and I think, just in terms of the questions and answers that we've received, I think you can, and hearing from our officers is that, I mean, this is reporting on the audit plan as it stands now but noting that officers have identified that our audit approach, internal audit approach does need to change and that will be put in place for the 2021, 2022 year and taking more of a risk-based approach and while still ensuring that core controls are in place. So I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. Do I have a seconda for the, for the motion? Thank you councillor Conde, sorry. Is there any debate? Okay, all right, well, I won't have a right to apply. So look, let's just move these recommendations and those in favour, please press 1, those against, 2. Okay, that's carried, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, thank you officers, is the long-term plan forecasting assumptions. And before I introduce this report, I will welcome Geoffrey Coe and Lloyd Jazzy to the table to answer any questions, noting that this has been before our LTP committee and if you notice in the report that there has been some minor amendments to some of that information and we also have Martin Reed there, so are there any questions of officers? Councillor Pennett?
Look, I know we've discussed this through the LTP process but it's, you know, very political, it's just trying to de-politicise this. I guess I still have concerns that we are not adequately meeting our major risk factors and when I look at the, you know, the sort of the arguments about how we're going to address some of these problems, I'm not sure that that gives us a comprehensive enough response. So for example, the risks around earthquake, not just our buildings but the whole of the city buildings, the sludge issue worries me a little bit too. So I guess just given that local government is under such critical scrutiny, do you feel confident, I guess the question is, that we can stand really confidently that we have identified all of those risks and can stand by them?
Just want to just note that this is about the assumptions, so it's not necessarily dealing with that, so I think it's got to be related to, have we got the assumptions right to inform the public in terms of feedback back on the consultation document?
Perhaps one thing I can respond in there is as part of these, these are audited items and the auditors do, as they go through this, take a broad look at that and I'm sure that if they were concerned about issues of the scope of the forecasting assumptions, they would bring that up.
I guess I'm just not sure whether, whether it's, whether they would understand that either, I mean, have you, are you really confident, for example, around climate change that, that within the space of say nine years, that we will be in a really good position as a city to meet the risk from earthquakes? I'm just not sure that that would be, to be able to be stand by.
I'm not sure that this is in relation to this paper, we're talking about...
Yeah, climate change is, it is in there.
No, no, we are talking about, have we got the assumptions correct going out?
Yeah, and that's what, and that's what I'm, yeah, and that's what I'm worried about and whether we have really made provision and understand some of the implications of we, basically the failure of taking action over some decades and now that we only have just a few budgets to address some of the issues that we've got.
Perhaps if I could comment, I think if you look at the actual assumption around climate change, we're basing that around the MFE guidelines, the actual response to climate change is really a separate debate which has happened through the annual plan, long-term plan committee in terms of the actions that are being taken and the investments that are being made. So I think this is really looking at the assumptions only, not in terms of the response which is part of the, what you've already dealt with in terms of the long-term plan.
And so just one last question, let's get Wally moving, just as another example, that we've put $220 million aside which, you know, clearly isn't enough, are you confident that that will stand because we know it's not going to cost 220? But the problem is the headroom seems to be applying to quite a lot of issues now, it's not just transport?
So that's, that's going to be dealt with in the consultation document as a signal, a signalling item rather than sitting in the assumptions per se and so it's actually highlighted for consultation, that we need for that to be successful and to be able to afford the rest of that programme, that alternative funding sources will be required and, and that is going out as a signal in the CD rather than buried in assumptions somewhere.
Mayor Foster?
A couple, a number of questions, first one of them is just a question of fact, in 19, in the paper, it says that the lockdown resulted in council, lost council revenue of 13.6 million. My recollection is that we had, we talked about a loss in the 2019, 2019, 2020 year but we haven't quantified the loss in 2020, 21 year. So what I was trying to get is a picture of the revenue loss to councils as a whole and obviously the other bit in there which comes in later is the expectation around loss of the wild dividend because what's being assumed there now is loss of the dividend in 2021 and I think 2021-2 and then a partial dividend in 22, 23 and 23-4. So what I'd like to see is a, what is the overall loss that we expect in terms of the non-wild revenue across both the years, 1920 and 2021 and then what's the expected, what are we expecting for wild as well? So we get a, we get a total of, what the total expected impact on councils' revenue has been from all sources over more than one year.
Yep, we can include that forecast.
That'll be cool, thank you. And the second, the area which I had a question about is the whole, and it's one that we don't know the answer to yet, and this is about the 25, 26, 27, which is the what about working from home and the impact on our rating base and on our, particularly our business and arts and culture communities. Well, obviously we don't know but we know that it's having an impact and I don't know there's anything we can say about that other than that it's having an impact and we don't know how big it's going to be.
I think you answered your own question.
Yeah. I'm not sure if I've got any others, go to someone else while I see if I've got any others.
Councillor Conde and then it will be deputy mayor Free.
Thanks, just wanted to say thank you for the update to the sea level rise wording, that was really appreciated. My question's about the cost of carbon and I guess my question is, is there actually a risk that the cost of carbon will be lower than what we've got here or is it actually only a risk on the other side that it'll be higher than what we have here? And I genuinely don't know but when I was reading the text, it kind of made it seem like the NZETS had kind of set minimum prices and I think if that, if what we're looking at is kind of the lowest it's going to be, then it would be useful to make that clear in kind of our level of certainty but I actually don't know if that's correct or not.
Well, it is uncertain and the pricing's just changing because we're now going to an auction-based system. I guess it's the best prediction as at this point in time, I don't think it's at the minimums but it is changing quite rapidly, sort of right now. I guess my question to you would be, what would you be expecting to see?
Well, I guess then maybe my suggestion would just be to change some of the wording under the data where it talks about the short to medium assumptions based on NZETS, I just found it a bit confusing when I was reading it.
Councillor Conde, do you have a page number that you're looking at?
Page 29.
Thank you.
You know, where it's talked about, you know, price trigger at $50 and, you know, going up by inflation, it just, I don't know, there was just something about the wording that...
There was a meeting with the brokers yesterday so I can get an update from that and, and we can review that.
Yeah, it was just something about, when I read it, I just didn't really feel like a good grasp.
Might be helpful councillor, if you can just fire us an email just in terms of what your area confusion is because certainly if it's confusing from your perspective, we want to make check that the fact we've got it is clear for other people, so just fire us a wee email and we'll have a look at that.
The last one was just about the funding sources on central library, I assume that's going to be removed before we go out to consultation, thank you.
Yes, it's just a function of the timing of papers and...
Deputy mayor Free?
Oh, I guess this does go back to, my question does go back to climate change again and it's just thinking about some of our assets and I'm really thinking about our retaining walls. How well do we understand the condition of our retaining walls but even more than that, how well do we understand where there are gaps, where we might need retaining walls that we haven't actually got them?
Is this, are you referring to a particular assumption?
Page 30 in the asset management, I just, I guess the question is, how confident are we that we really do understand the condition of our assets, particularly assets that might be adversely affected by...
Deputy mayor Free, sorry, I'm just trying to understand, in relation to this paper, which, which assumption are you referring to? Or are you suggesting that we don't have an assumption that we should be, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I guess, I'm probably saying that I think we're making an assumption about some of our assets that we might need to be more cautious about making an assumption.
Is this specifically about the life cycles or...
Yes, it's looking at assets and asset life in years and asset, yeah, asset life cycles, yeah. I think that we do have, my own feeling is we have a gap in our understanding and I wonder if that provides some kind of risk.
So the driver from these asset life cycles is specifically for the calculation of depreciation, it's not about the replacement of those assets. So the reason these assumptions are in here, that these drive the calculation of depreciation, so those are the useful lives we use to divide the value of the asset by its useful life to calculate the annual amount of depreciation which is then rates funded to be able to replace that asset at the end of their useful life. It's only a forecast, it doesn't necessarily mean that when we get to 100 years on a water reservoir, we automatically replace it if it's still in good condition, we won't, if it fails before that, we obviously will replace it, it's just a forecast predictor and it's based on the average life of the actual assets. It's different to asset planning when we are condition scoring and going and forecasting when we will renew those assets which are, as you point out, is based on condition scoring and we can take it offline about the retaining wall specifically.
It's not something we've thought about and it's not specifically mentioned in this paper but I do think it's, there's a risk there that we're not maybe picking up on.
Look, I think that's about, more about the quality of the asset management plans which we've, which we have previously discussed in another committee and I know we have our external auditor here and that is part of the audit process of the LTP consultation document, that they need to have assurance over the quality of the asset management planning. So it's probably slightly out of this scope of this paper. Are there any other questions? Oh, sorry, councillor Pennett?
Quickly, the wild dividend, what is the idea based on that it will continue through the 2020s and possibly even to the 2030s?
That's correct, so that's the assumption.
But why, I'm just curious.
Because it's considered business as usual and there is no... Because it's considered business as usual, and there is no divestment or change proposed or planned at this point in time, although we do have a review of, of our assets to come that's being signaled in the LTP. But no decisions have been, been made to change that as business as usual. And it has just returned, the assumption is that it's returned to its previous profitability, and therefore previous level of dividends.
So that gets to the crux of the issue, I think, that, that you've made an assumption around business as usual, and whether that assumption is correct or not.
I just wonder whether, again, which, I'm not sure whether it's, I think you're getting into sort of a political debate.
No, no, the question is, no, no, the question is, is, so, so if climate change is coming on stream, people are probably going to have to fly less. So I just, I'm just curious about what assumptions that you're looking into there? And what evidence? That's all.
There is no change assumed effectively. When, when you unpick that, it's effectively assumed to be returned back to the same level of profitability and dividend issue. And, and therefore, all the previous assumptions around that have been made. So there's no forecasting or decisions made to either divest the asset or look at the change in activity.
I just reinforce that there's, there's no decision on the table to divest that asset at the moment, but if, if there was, then obviously this assumption would need to be changed.
Thank you, councillor Rush?
Thanks. Maybe one for Alison, might want to pop up, talk about a little bit, similar question to councillor Pannett's, but the, coming from the other point of view.
What's, what's the question? Because I don't think you can request another officer to come, we've got three officers answering.
Oh, apologies.
So, yeah, so we just want to do the, follow a quick process, but can you just?
So we've made a provision, I suppose, for climate change, but the current data from Ministry for Environment talks about Wellington and Warrapu not expect to experience any change in frequency of extreme rainy days, so no water, wind might, is likely to increase two to three percent, which is fairly trivial. So I'm just sort of thinking, I'm left with sea level rise, and, and that hasn't really changed at 1.7 millimeters a year. So I'm just, I, I guess, when are we gonna, are we going to periodically review the Ministry for Environment assumptions to see if they are actually tracking what the projections are? With a view to informing ourselves with latest data? That's why I suggested Alison.
I, I guess one point is, I know the Ministry of Environment are a constant review of their particular predictions, and, and they're also an independent body from us, and that's one of the reasons why we actually try and use them as well. In terms of our focus on this, no, we don't have a focus on reviewing their assumptions per se, but we know that they're constantly updating their data as well.
Okay, but I'm guessing then these assumptions will be updated periodically as the MFE does that then? I'm just thinking that over a 10-year period, we probably won't even get back to the 2016 peak of sea level, given the amount of drop.
Look, I, I think, I think the key thing is to remember that this is forecasting assumptions that's going to go into the consultation document, which we are agreeing at the end of March in a couple of weeks. So there may well be changes happening later on, but these are the, what we're looking at is the assumptions that we need to put into our consultation document, based on the information we know now.
This is far as though, so it's an opportunity to question. I did ask for the links to the MFE website when we discussed this in the LTP, and didn't receive them, so apologies for bringing this up.
No, that's, that's fine, that's fine, but I think it's just good to keep us on track for this paper. Okay, I think. So Rush, was there any other questions on that point? Is it, without opening it up to you? On this paper? Okay, thank you. Mayor Foster?
Five things which are genuinely about assumptions in the paper, which you'll be pleased by.
Great.
First one is on page twenty-four, there's a thirty percent, sorry, one in thirty, one in thirty-year on an earthquake of level, a level seven. Tom Williams helpfully sent us around some numbers the other day, which were a little more scary than that, in terms of the whole lot of different earthquake situations, you know, different, different faults, et cetera. What are we saying, what are we saying there for that one? Is that just one particular line? Or is it any, any seismic activity that will register something of, for Wellington that was equivalent to seven or above?
My understanding is that it's not a particular fault line that it's talking about, it's from the Wellington Lifelines Report. And the point of that assumption really is to help understand the risk profile accounts in terms of seismic events.
Yeah, it probably, it's probably not going to make a lot of difference, we should still do the same thing regardless, but in terms of getting prepared, but, yeah. Okay, cool. Second one, under the human resources, it's got 2.8, 2.8, 2.8, is that, that's our assumed salary increases every year? Is that what, is that what I read that as being? And you think that that's a reasonable assumption?
I'll have to double-check that one because I believe that's been updated. We do get an independent review of that from Birl through Solgum. And I believe that has been updated. So I'll have to double-check and come back.
Okay, it's just, it's the source of it's good. Okay, and just picking up the question which was raised, I think, by the deputy mayor on asset lifespan. So those, those years, that's what we're seeing on the ground? I'm, I mean, I guess I'm interested more in the engineering driving the accounting, rather than the accounting driving the engineering, if you know what I mean, in terms of lifespan. Is that what we're seeing on the ground, that those assets last roughly that sort of length of time, or those ranges of times?
Yep, I believe that to be the case.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, cool. And then last two, there's a, an assumption there that under the Three Waters Reform, that we're still carrying on as usual, but I think we'd probably say that's probably unlikely in that area, but at the moment, we've got to, but we just shift it when, we need to shift it, that's the way we're going to treat this?
Yeah, there's too much uncertainty about what the outcome will be. So everybody knows that we've entered the process, but the outcome of that process is unknown. There's a lot, a lot to work through in terms of assets, debt, and the implications are quite large, so until we have any certainty, we're budgeting business as usual.
Okay, cool. And the final one is just the valuation of our ground leases, the civic square ground leases. Twenty-seven million seems quite low for three, three sites, especially after demolition costs, and certainly the feedback I've had from people who are interested in development is they might be worth considerably more than that. But is that just a conservative number we've put in there for the moment?
My understanding is it's not conservative, it's actually more realistic, not, not highly conservative, but I can, I can feed back to offline the, where they believe they're at in terms of that valuation.
Thank you. Great, cool. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before I introduce the report? Okay, don't think.
Sorry, through you, Chair, we did want to table an update on the interest rates. So they, they're now out of date, and, and want to update you with the current ones that are actually being used in the budget.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to table that because they're, they're actually built into the model.
Okay, can I just, I'm just, I don't need to formally adjourn, but I just think we just need a, a few minutes just to look at what you're tabling.
And that presumably would mean we'd receive the information as adjusted or as amended?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Just on the future carbon price, so it looked pretty robust. Just wondering, was there anything in the Climate Change Commission's report that would validate those numbers or, or invalidate?
Sorry, I haven't, I haven't read the report. However, as I mentioned earlier, what we will do is get our brokers to review this, who are obviously involved in the transactions and exchanges, so they, they can review our report and our forecasts. Who will be aware of the report?
Okay, has, has everybody had a chance to have a quick look at this and whether there was any questions?
Through you, Chair, do you want me to just give you a brief overview?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be great.
So the interest rates used have come down, and what we're seeing here is a, the, the overall weighted average cost of funds. So it takes all of our different costs. We have a number of different debt instruments, from bank facilities, commercial paper, which is short-term loans. We also have floating rate notes, some hedging across those floating rate notes, and we have fixed bonds. And so it's that weighted average of all of those different instruments with various interest rates. Overall, that weighted average has come down from that prior forecast. As you know, we're at quite a low EBIT on our interest rates. The council has had representations from sort of people in the media around our interest rates and the very low cost of funds. Some of that information is a little misleading, so our cost of funds is very low, we can get down to 1% cost of funds, but you're sort of looking at four-month to one-year term debt. And, and as we've sort of previously explained to the council, our debt is, should be considered as perpetual debt, so while we pay it off with depreciation funding, we also reborrow it at the end of the asset life to renew assets. So our loans tend to be much longer term, and with that comes an increase in interest rates. Also, those very low interest rates aren't fixed, so that there's no hedging on them. And, and we do hedge currently, around 70% of our, of our debt is hedged, and that comes with a higher interest rate. So overall, the portfolio has come down over recent years as, as we move through maturities of old debt and replace it with new funding, new debt, and, and at lower rates. However, the rates are forecast, both the 90-day rate and the term rates have been increasing for a number of months now, three or four months, and that's expected to continue into the future. So you, you can see that over the years, those rates are increasing over time.
Any questions on that? Mayor Foster?
So if we wanted to borrow for, say, 10 years, you know, and obviously I get the perpetual, but what sort of price would we be paying at the moment?
Well, I haven't got today's rates.
Presuming it's lower than these because?
It is lower than these, it would be around two, I think, 2.3%.
Okay, if that helps here. Thanks. Cool.
Councillor Rush?
Yeah, just wondering, what's the plus or minus on these numbers, do you think? Are they 1%, 1.5%, something like that, depending on how far you get out you go?
That's a very good question, because we've been scouring the Treasury's website for they who used to do forecasting, but only out to three years, and they're now not publishing any forecasts by the looks of things, although we can't find any. So, so it's very incredibly difficult to tell. Obviously, economic conditions around the world are changing, and, and it's very difficult. So what we are forecasting in the 90-day rate is very, very low. So our, part of our modelling uses unhedged debt with a, the 90-day rate plus a margin. And so that 90-day rate is forecast to be very low, and it's basically taken off the swap rates that go out. So we can do a swap for 10 years today, and so that rate will be different for doing a swap for two years or five years. And the difference between those rates are what we are using. And so they are still continuing to be very low, so there is risk that the interest rates will go up at a greater rate. By the time we get to year 10, it'll be a completely different market, so those rates probably won't be relevant.
But we can manage that variability by, by hedging, as you mentioned.
So we, we manage interest rate risk through, through hedging, so it will take a long time. So if interest rates went up 3% tomorrow, it's not going to have a big impact, it will have an impact over time. And we do, do forward start swaps, so we can, we can do a swap today that will start in three years' time, at, at today's pricing for three years, so we can actually hedge out into the future. So we'll, and, and the purpose of doing that is so you can win and you can lose, depending on what, what happens when you get to the market at the time. But the purpose of doing that is to give us certainty over our interest cost, and that gives us certainty over our ability to rate for our full costs. And so it's that whole balanced budget thing that's a requirement of the Local Government Act.
Thanks.
I take it there's no other questions? I will proceed to introduce the paper. And looking, you'll notice that we've just updated recommendation number one, which is to include the tabled interest rate information. Just a reminder that this is a technical committee, not more so than a political committee, in terms of some of the debates that we might get into. So we're dealing with the information in front of us to ensure that the, the assumptions, the long-term planning assumptions are appropriate to go into our long-term plan consultation document, which goes out to the public early in April, and which we sign off at the end of March. We've, these assumptions, subject to some minor amendments, because we're debated in the Long-Term Plan Committee last month, so everyone's had a chance to have a look at them. I know the, in terms of the, the audit, our external auditor will be looking at these assumptions to ensure that they are appropriate and there's, and they're evidence-based. And that will, that will form part of their review leading up to when we get presented with the final draft Long-Term Plan Consultation Document at the end of March. So I'm going to move the, those recommendations. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mayor Foster. Do you wish to speak? Is there any debate? Councillor Pannett?
So I'd like to obviously thank the officers for their work. It's appreciated, and I think it's really healthy to look at our assumptions, because sometimes our assumptions have been hidden, and that can get us into lots of trouble. So I guess my concern here, I'm just reading our climate change submission, which talks about the need for transformation. So that's one arm of council, and then we have another arm of council which says it's business as usual. And I guess that's the assumption that I want to challenge, and in a very apolitical way, actually, because climate change is backed by robust scientific evidence, and it's not just a local phenomenon, but a global one, obviously. So all the assumptions around economic growth, around the, the wild dividend, I think, do need to be challenged a little bit, that, that the world is going to go through rapid change. We know also, of course, that until the world is vaccinated against COVID, the ability to travel freely will be hugely limited. So I think I'm not entirely comfortable with some of these. On waste, you know, this is again is a political, this again sits at councillors' door. We actually haven't funded, of course, our sludge solution, and in these assumptions, there's nothing around the risks around a failure to implement a robust resource recovery system, which I think is missing. So I'm not going to move a whole lot of amendments today, but I think that some of that will need addressing. There's also an extremely heavy focus on our headroom, which is not in the amount of billions, as we know. And so in terms of actually saying that we've mitigated some of these, these risks, and we've got a plan forward, I think is possibly of concern, as is progress around Let's Get Welling Moving, which seems to have stalled, and hopefully we'll get back on track. The risks around earthquakes, again, I'm just going to raise this, we say that we've got some insurance to cover, but the whole of the city and its impacts is not considered here. And I think the, while we might only have responsibility for our own buildings, obviously, if there is a disaster in the city, it has an impact on the council, and so needs to be more carefully considered. So, you know, look, I think there's some useful things here, but I don't, just given local government is under intense scrutiny for its planning and its ability to be able to provide good infrastructure, I think we've got some more work to do to make sure that our assumptions are really robust.
Are there any other, anybody else like to enter the debate? Councillor Rush?
Not wanting to be drawn into a political discussion. Just, I guess my, my own concern, I suppose, I think also shared by councillor Pannett, I would like to see more robust analysis of the seismic risk, because that is, without doubt, in my view anyway, the biggest problem we've got in the city. And there are numbers given. And there are numbers giving sort of the likelihood of tremors of certain measurements and so forth. And I think that if I were to do this myself, I would be putting more emphasis on those and highlighting to our community just how real they are. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Foster?
Just quickly, given the comments that have been made. Terms of the, the airport and revenue from the airport, if we take the line that councillor Pennett is suggesting and it was exactly that risk, I saw the airport as being a risky proposition before, which is why I asked you all about the possibility of divesting it. And then, of course, we ran straight into COVID, so it's put its value through the floor, probably. And that's why I asked you whether we should divest because it's not a risk-free proposition. And climate change is the one, you know, of all the disruptors affecting the airport, climate change is the one that's the most significant. And the downside risk obviously goes to our, well, to people's willingness and ability and the cost of travel. If it affects those, it affects the airport. And from the point of view of this, it affects the airport finances and therefore our finances. So this is all about our finances. So the risk that you should bear in mind is the possibility that on an ongoing basis, we have an up to 4% loss in our revenue stream and therefore an additional impost on our rates. And therefore I would think that that should be a message to us to be a little more cautious with how we spend money in the immediate term and going forward because it, it constrains the ability of future generations and the costs which it imposes on future generations. Likewise, the, the issues around earthquake, same thing. We've got to be really careful with, these risks are real. And I think they're understated here too. Certainly the numbers Tom Williams gave us the other day was like, oh gosh. But we don't want to talk them up too much. A, on one side with the airport, we could talk its value down if we're going to sell it, which would be really stupid of us. And an earthquake, we talk the value of the city down. So we've got to be careful with what we say. And then the final thing around headroom, which was raised in some of the questions is we're just going to make sure that that's the whole purpose of having headroom. There's a whole bunch of things sitting out there. Some of them we know about, some of them we don't know about, but we need to maintain that headroom. And that's, you know, while that might be slightly political, this is just about the prudence, which is what our management have told us that we need to exercise. These are the reasons we need to exercise that prudence.
Thank you. No one else? Anybody else would like to? Okay, well, I would just, I'll go to write a reply. Councillor Pennett, you made some comments about what we need to do. You were uncomfortable and we need to do more planning. I think one of the things with assumptions is they will continually change. But we do need to put a line in the sand right at the moment. We have, we have statutory obligations to meet in terms of making sure that we, we do get out a consultation document on, on our long-term plan. And so whilst things may move in the future, we have to put a, a line in the sand. And all, all elected members have had opportunities to feedback into these assumptions. And as I said, they've already in part been debated as part of our long-term planning committee last month. So, and, and also they do need to be evidence-based in what we've got. I know the officers are continually updating their information, especially around seismic risk and, and climate change. We know our officers are working very closely with EQC, GNS and Newa to make sure that they're getting the information on the table as soon as it can be utilized. I know some, some councillors may have views on, on, on how accurate that information is, but I think it is one of those things that we are continually updating. But for this particular purpose, we do need to put a line in the sand. And knowing that as part of the audit process, if there is any relevant information that can be updated into these assumptions, it will be, it will be done. But we're, we're pretty close to the wire now, given that it's currently being externally audited. So I think we just need to think about, we need to land our assumptions to go into the CD document. They've already been through the Long-Term Plan Committee. And, and this is an opportunity to put a finance audit and risk lens over them. And so I, sorry, I didn't mean to ding the bell then, dinging on myself. But that I will move these resolutions. Yep, it was. Stop it. So I will invite you all to vote accordingly. Thank you. Okay. I, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll do the next paper, then we will take a break for morning tea. Okay, so before I introduce the report, welcome the finance team, Anne-Marie and Richard and Lloyd there to answer any questions that you may have on the draft annual report format. councillor Pennett and then councillor Conde.
Thanks for this. I'm sure it's heaps of work. Sorry, just reading through it. Are there really any differences from last year or the years before? It was hard to pick.
Yes, there's just been some minor amendments. They've been colour-coded yellow in the financial statements in the attachment. But essentially, as you've already picked out, the format and the, and the layout is going to be pretty much similar to previous years because of the feedback we've had from external people who assess a large number of annual reports. And they're saying this is a pretty good setup and format.
councillor Conde?
Thank you. Just a question on page 185. We talk about COVID-19 support for related parties. And I was looking at those and just thinking that we've also provided an underwrite to the World of Wearable Arts. But I'm assuming that that's not there because they're not a related party. But I just wanted to check that.
You are correct that they are not a related party.
Excellent. Okay. That was my easy question. The other, the other question I'd like to ask, and I guess we can start on page 203, which is with the essential services benchmark. But this is really coming from my work on the Three Waters Task Force and just thinking about, based on the findings that we had in the Three Waters Task Force, about the fact that it was quite difficult for people to see how depreciation was being spent and where the depreciation was coming up with renewals. Should we be looking at some changes in the way that we present the information in this annual report coming up to show that we're moving to make that clearer for councillors and for the public? And, you know, the one, the essential services benchmark was one that I jumped on because I look at that and I, and it, the graph looks great. But having sat on the Three Waters Task Force, it doesn't really feel very accurate. I'm not trying to say it's not accurate, but it doesn't, you know, it certainly, it doesn't seem consistent with the findings. So I guess I've got a question about how, what the data is that's in there, is the fact that it's amalgamated across the whole council instead of just in Three Waters? And, you know, we also do some reporting on page 224 about capex by strategy and how much we're spending in each area replacing existing assets. But can we do something that brings together some of that information in a way that's going to be a lot clearer for people?
Firstly, just with the financial prudent benchmarks, which the essential services benchmark is that you're referring to, that's a, that is governed by legislation and we cannot adjust any of the measure or colour or even large parts of the wording. We can only add to it, but we can't take away from it or change the calculation as such.
Excellent. Well, then I would say it would be great to add to the wording in terms of making sure that it's a lot clearer about what actually is, because I can't tell by reading that what that means in terms of expenditure on network services, for example. So I think it would be useful to be able to be a lot more clear about, about that. But I think adding to it then is, is definitely my question.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
Through your chair, can I just add that I think you'll get more value looking over a longer period than a single year as well. So let's, let's think about how and when we take a longer term view of that expenditure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to move any amendments or anything today. I'm happy to kind of silence off as, as it is, but just signalling that I think it's really important that we reflect on the lessons of the Three Waters Task Force and make sure that we are incorporating those into our performance reporting in whatever way is appropriate going forward.
Sorry, just further to your comments councillor. There's nothing stopping us from putting that kind of information elsewhere in the annual report. We don't have to just keep it in this area. And I'll look across at Lloyd, you know, that might be something that could go in the service performance section.
I think so. I think that's where we can probably bring that in and not get caught up with some of the more requirements we have around the financial statements. There's probably a story that you'd like to have told around that.
Mr Tiffin?
I've read this with interest, which I would do, most of you won't. But that's what I do, or I have done for many years. I think it's a really good idea to, to have this to us now. By the time you finish in September, October, you'd probably be fed up with looking at it because it's got more and more information as you go. But I think the message from, from this one is that there's not a lot of change from last year, which was a very satisfactory set of financial statements. I think we can all agree with that. So the highlighted bits, councillor Pennett, are that there are very few of them. And they're the bright yellow and not the other, the yellow ochre or whatever it is. So I think thanks very much, Richard and your team. I think it's, it's useful to have a view now that we're not looking for major changes. And I certainly wouldn't see how, how we could change things structurally at this stage. And I might say it's very difficult to read financial statements like this without the numbers. Without the current numbers, you, you kind of don't get the feeling, but it's a useful process. And I'm, I'm happy with it.
Okay, I've just got a couple of questions now. I know this is, we're looking at this current year's annual report and we've only just approved the last year's one and that being published early this year. But have you had any feedback about our, the, the latest annual report that's been published, given that it's just gone, you know, it's only been out a month or two?
No, we haven't at this stage. I suspect there are bigger things in the community which has got in the way than giving feedback on annual reports. All due respect to the people in this room. So no, we haven't as yet. I guess as time goes by, we'll have some questions trickle through from the community, but no.
So will you be able to bring anything that does come out? You'll bring that, you'll highlight that to us when, when we do workshop the, the first draft?
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, one of the things is, we, we signed it off right just before Christmas. We, there wasn't an opportunity to take longer because of what we experienced with COVID last year. But are we confident that we, that this timeline? And given any conversations you've had with our external auditors, that this timeline is, is still relevant and appropriate?
I'll, I'll let the auditors talk for themselves on that one. But at this stage, this is the best of our knowledge and looking forward is our best of our expectations. So yes, we are confident in that at this stage. Obviously, the curve ball of, of COVID, if we go into a lockdown position again and, and have any of the other issues repeating that we had last time, obviously that would be adjustment to that. But having said that, we are thinking about when we set a timeline of, of what are the plan Bs? What are the what ifs and so on sitting in there? What if this gets in the way and so on? So yes, at this stage, we're pretty comfortable with what we've got there.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm, would it be possible at our next, you might well have this on our agenda for the next fast committee, but be able to just give us a verbal update just on the process of how things are tracking, rather than us leave it till September?
Sure, no problem with that.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Well, okay, so look, I'm, I'll introduce this, this report. Thank you for the questions that have been asked by councillors. I think that's given good feedback to the officers to help with the finalisation of the format. Thank you, Mr Tiffin, for your comments on how we will, in comparison to the previous year's report as well, and noting that it was satisfactory, which is, which is high praise from an auditor. So look, I'm going to move these recommendations as per the paper. Do I have a second? I'll, I'll let, Tiffin will second. Do you wish to speak? Okay, is there any debate? All right, well, no right of reply. So I will now put these, these recommendations, a motion forward. Those in favour, please, please press one. Those against, press two. Thank you. I love this meeting. It's always unanimous, or nearly always unanimous. So thank you. Motion carried. Technical committee. Look, and that's great timing. We'll take a 15 minute break for morning tea. Thank you. Oh, I'm all ready to get started. We're powering through this agenda, so we are now up to the health and safety report. Before we get into this, just a reminder that in your papers, you also have the health and safety performance report, which is, has more, a lot more detailed staff information, which will be being discussed under public excluded. So this is about the, just the actual report that's going to go to Strategy and Policy Committee on the 18th of March. So before I introduce the report, can I welcome Meredith and Gareth to the table? And they'll answer any questions that you may have on this, in this public session. Not the performance report, that's under public excluded, yeah. So are there any questions, councillor Pennett?
Just in terms of councillors' health and safety visits, how many do we need to do, do you think? And are you sort of checking that everyone's done them? And do we need to do anything else too, actually?
Sure, maybe I'll just cover off the broader due diligence aspects first. So holistically, there are the right mechanisms in place to be able to exercise due diligence within your role, which includes the site visits or engagements. In terms of how many to do, there's some general guidance within our toolkit, which talks about doing them periodically throughout the year. How many is, there is no set number for both elected and executive members, which probably points towards the quality of those as well, so that we're not sort of pushing too many of them through, so that we're able to focus on the quality of those engagements. We had an offline conversation between Meredith and myself around what's practical in that space. We think two per year planned in detail would be appropriate for elected members and then four for executive members with the Norg, yeah, which we will capture within our toolkit. So we've got some guidance moving forward. So that's what we've put as what's reasonably practical at this stage.
Councillor Conde?
This mentioned in the paper that there was a bow tie risk assessment done about personal confrontation in December. Can you tell us just a bit more about that? Because I know it's, it's something that we're seeing across all of our, our kind of public facing business units post-COVID. So it'd be great to hear more about.
Sure, so it had been a bow tie that had been completed previously around personal confrontation a few, about three and a half years ago. So why it was identified to revisit personal confrontation as a bow tie was in particular the increased likelihood and the consequence of personal confrontation related events happening since the back of alert levels. So we'd seen right across the organisation in all, particularly our customer front facing sites with parking wardens, but also around the contact centre and some of the non-physical type situations where the nature of the comments were more significant or the nature of the actions being undertaken were more significant. So an example would be previously, a parking warden would have been told that something was going to happen to them. What we were seeing in action was people being pushed. So physical actions actually manifesting. So what we did was engage with different parts of the business, brought them together using the bow tie assessment model or the, that format to bring people together to talk about how we understand what that risk is, what potential consequences are, and that's the, the formation of that model. And also, not only what our current controls are, but also what could we do, what are additional new controls? What we found in particular was that there is some inconsistencies around how we view how to manage the risk around physical and non-physical. And so the same control measures should be true to both environments, as opposed to looking at physical contact, we tend to do a bit more, whereas in the non-physical space or online, if you like, we don't tend to see those control measures as effectively. Yeah, so it's about strengthening the controls in that environment. And we've often talked about how do we publicly make that clear around that we're not accepting those types, but that type of behaviour, which has been, will be a continuing focus.
Any other questions? All right, well, I'll go to introducing the report now. Just first off, thank you, officers, for pulling this information together. It's, you know, it is a critical part of our, of our governance responsibilities to make sure that we do have an effective system in place around health and safety at, at the workplace. We need to, as, this is one case where actually governors, council are actually considered to be officers under this legislation. So, and, and understanding our role as, as officers under the Health and Safety in Workplace Act. So, and, and helping us to sort of understand what those responsibilities are and taking us through it. And I know that's something that we are continually improving on how we can upskill from a governance perspective our, our skills and capability in this area. And, and obviously, one of those things is the site visits, because you actually see it in, in action on what needs to be done and making sure that the actual, the system that the organisation has in place is, is working and where we can improve, because it is about continuous improvement as well. And as new risks to our workforce occur, that we can, that we can adapt readily to ensure that we, we either eliminate or minimise those risks where possible. So it's, it's very simple in terms of the recommendations that we're receiving the information and noting that there will be a report to next week's Strategy and Policy Committee. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms Reba. Is there any debate? Okay, so no rider reply because of that. So look, thank you, and we'll move to the vote. Those in favour, please press one, those against, two. Thank you. Thank you. I declare the motion carried. Okay. So officers recommend that the public is excluded from the following part of the proceedings of this meeting. I will move the motion.
Thank you very much. Thank you everyone.